Valley Center City Council Meeting for August 16th, 2022 is now in session. Roll call.
Mayor Cicero.
Here.
Councilmember Stan.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Bass.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Kersdatter.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Colbert.
Do we have, uh, don't, huh? Nope, do not see. Okay, please rise for the, join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion of second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. Motion carries. Move on to item six, Administrative Agenda, the City Council Meeting Minutes of August 2nd, 2022.
Motion to approve minutes as presented.
I have a motion of second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving on to item seven, uh, Presentations and Proclamations. Um, we do have a presentation, so to speak, but, um, Chief Newman.
Introduction. Mayor, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, just recently approved the new elementary SRO and, uh, we were, we've been working on several positions. So we were able to hire Officer Jessica Smith to fill that role. We're excited. Uh, she comes in with experience, uh, from Andover Police Department. Uh, she's already, she kinda, we're still waiting on some of her uniforms to get here. She's hit the ground running, so school has started and she's already in there, uh, meeting people and, and, uh, interacting with the kids and we're excited about that. Uh, she won't be here at the end of tonight's meeting, but we've got several, uh, events coming up, including Fall Fest, and I'm sure you will see her out in the building with Officer Jessica Smith.
Welcome.
I can't see his camera. He can't see me.
And I do want to mention one thing just for transparency. Um, our new officer is the wife of our, uh, Assistant City Administrator, Director of Finance, and staff has already taken the proper, uh, steps to ensure that she will never report up the chain to Mr. Smith. So just wanted to make sure that's out there for transparency. All right, our next item on the, uh, is Presentations is an update on sanitary sewer lining project. Wade, I didn't even recognize you when you walked in.
I'm not, uh, smiling in a hole with a.
I, I, seriously, you walked in, I said, who is that? And then I looked, oh gosh, that's Wade.
Yeah, I guess I don't need.
You're making, you're making your boss look.
I know, we have here tonight our infrastructure manager all dressed up and he looks very, very nice and he's gonna present to you. He, he worked hard and put together a little presentation to explain the recent sewer line project that we just did.
All righty, like Rodney said, I just wanted to do a follow-up on the recent lining project that we had done. I'd like to start by saying thank you very much for the approval. Um, I'd like to compare that line to a major artery. Um, it is downstream from the Colby Lift Station, which services a very large portion of the northeast part of town, which flows into that lift station. And it's a vital, vital line. And we finally got it taken care of and Ron Exstrom can now sleep at night. He's been, he's been worried about that line for 20 years, so. Without further ado. Here's a map of the, the line that was taken care of by UMC. The upstream manhole is there right off of Allen and Colby, B-15. It flows south to B-13 and from there it will go west. Um, so the, the lining project was from Allen to Clay in the easement of, between Colby and Dexter. B-15 is on the north end. That's the upstream manhole where it began. B-15-1 is a manhole which was raised during the project. Uh, that was done due to the fact that it was buried, uh, 10, 12 inches below grade. We had to find that and that was part of the project and it was raised, so now, now we will no longer have the problem of I and I, the infiltration from ground runoff, it's above grade, so that'll help keep, um, infiltration out of the sanitary sewer collection system. B-14 was also raised during the project due to the same circumstance. It was below grade 10, 12 inches in the backyard and we did the same there. B-13 is the southern end. That's the end of the line where the flow begins to go west towards Meridian and on its way to the plant there. The line was 750 feet approximately of linear feet of lining. 17 service connections were reinstated during the project. It was a two-day lining process. They did the southern half first. They went up to, I believe, B-14. They stopped there. They let it cure. They went in and worked until approximately 11:00 PM to get all the services cut in. And they did that from inside, um, with a camera, with a hole saw essentially. So they, they worked late and I appreciate the patience from the citizens and the residents on that. Uh, I didn't receive any complaints. They worked with us well on, um, letting know, letting us know what needed to be moved or, you know, just being patient and working with the contractors. So we really appreciate that. Also, to complete this, we had to have two point repairs done. One was initially known, um, from the camera footage that we did have. And that one would be from B-13, 50 linear feet upstream. There's a collapsed service connection, which I'll later show. And the other was found, um, 20 feet upstream from B-14 there. They also had to go in, open cut and make a repair there. The repairs were made by cutting in 10, about 10 feet of PVC pipe, not Schedule 40, it's like SDR, 900 pipe, thick wall. And then they joined the clay tile at those, um, cuts. So they reinstated the structural integrity of the pipe at that point in time, so that way we could line the full length of the, the sanitary sewer. Here are some photos of the defects from B-15 to B-14. This is showing cracks in the quadrants there. The B-15 to B-14 section, which is the northern section of line, had a little bit than the south end of the line, but with those cracks, uh, it was not ideal. Those cracks allow I and I, which ends up going into our wastewater treatment plant. And then we're just treating rainwater and that's not ideal for, for the process there. So that's another great process is to help with flows at the wastewater treatment plant. So there is a very severe collapse there. The, the line's starting to, to oblong and oval as opposed to, you know, stay in its true shape. And then here's that collapsed service connection there. They were unable to get a camera. So they, they were able to camera up to that point from B-13. Had to shoot back from B-14 to that point to camera the whole, the whole section of line. And that was replaced in the point repair. And then here's some footage of the finished product. This is the best footage we had, the clearest. And basically this is what the whole line looks like now. You'll, you'll be shocked. So to hold form during the curing process, they injected water to hold the shape of the, the liner. So they maintained water pressure on that until it cured and then drained the water back out. They can do it with air, but due to the severity of the damage in our line, we had to utilize water. And that, that way it filled all the voids and held, held to the structure. Gave us the best results. There, you see, you can see some of the cracks right there. But as far as integrity, uh, we should see 50 years out of this line. That's the end of, end of the PowerPoint there. Can I answer any questions for you folks?
Let's, let's just remind everybody, this was the, the line that we opted to go with the fill instead of digging up the entire neighborhood.
That's correct.
It did save the city some money in doing that. Um, those images just blew me away of how sharp they were. Uh, I mean, the video was pretty cool too, but I was really surprised at how sharp those images showed, especially the one collapse there. So, um, I, it's pretty amazing. Uh, technology today has just gotten, and it's gonna get better, but yeah, that, that whole thing from the day they brought it to, when you brought it to us and explained what we wanted to do, um, is just amazing. So, Council, any comments or questions? Seeing none? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
All right, we're gonna move on to item eight, the public forum. This is the time that anybody here in the council chambers may speak to an item that is not on the agenda. Seeing none? We'll move on to item nine, appointments. We do have a, a change in Pool Rec, uh, Center Committee. Uh, Melissa Farrenbach is to be removed and Tina Payne is to be added. Um, so if there is a motion to accept those changes.
I'm moved.
I have a motion of second to accept the changes of Tina Payne being added to the Pool and Rec Center Steering Committee and Melissa Farrenbach to be removed. Any other further discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Move on to old business. Item A, Ordinance 1379-22, Amendment to the City's Adopted Building Codes for Second Reading.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, this is the second reading that will amend the city's adopted building code. This will allow for the use of 3D printing. Uh, specifically, uh, we're looking for this project, the upcoming project on the Ford Street property, uh, now known as, will be known as the Sunflower Valley, uh, plat, platted area. Uh, but again, this is the second reading. Stand for any questions you may have regarding this ordinance.
Council? Councilmember Kersdatter.
No, I, I'm familiar with ASTM methods or that bu, group of, uh, standards. How hard would it be, will it be to amend this? Will it have to come before the council if we find that, oh hey, this one, we need to modify this to, because we found this.
Oh, that's a very, that's a great question. So as this is, uh, an emerging technology.
Exactly.
This is a learning process, not only for us at the city, but also for Crane Company as well. And for anyone else that is, uh, engaged in this type of construction method. Uh, so if it does turn out that we need to go with another set of standards, uh, then we could simply, uh, amend, either amend this ordinance or repeal and repeal and replace at a future time.
Thanks.
Uh, but again, that is the standard that has been adopted by the International Code Council, uh, which is a respected body throughout the United States.
Right.
So again, we are adhering to national standards, adopting the, and adopting them at a local level.
Anybody else?
Make a motion of approval of Ordinance 1379-22, amend the city building code for second reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item B, Ordinance 1380-22, Uniform Public Offense Code for Second Reading.
Good evening again. Uh, this is just the second reading for the Uniform Public Offense Code. Uh, again, this is just, uh, keep us current with the changes made in legislature last session. Stand for any questions.
Council?
Motion to adopt Ordinance 1380-22, amending Chapter 9 dot 01 of the Valley Center Municipal Code and amendments thereto for second reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. Motion carries. And item C, Ordinance 1381-22, Standard Traffic Offense Code for Second Reading.
Second reading again for the Standard Traffic Offense Code book, just to keep us in line with the state statutes and any changes they made. Stand for any questions you may have for this.
Council?
Make a motion to adopt Ordinance 1381-22, amending Chapter 10.04, Section 10 of the Valley Center Municipal, Municipal Code and amendments thereto related to the regulation of traffic within a corporate limits of the City of Valley Center, Kansas, for second reading.
Second. A motion in a few seconds. So, uh, any further questions? Seeing none? All in favor, raise your hands. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, item A, Supplemental Agreement with SEH for Construction Documents for Ford Street Development Public Improvements. Council, you were handed, uh, you were left on your desk a, uh, a copy of this. Uh, the original one in the packet had the wrong address, so that's why you have a copy of it. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Jake Vashia with SEH. Uh, what you have before you is a supplemental agreement to our original agreement. Um, reason this is supplemental as, um, we started this plat in our construction documents improvements project. Uh, the project then grew into a, that to include our multifamily area, uh, that Crane Anderson is now, um, developing. So this portion and supplemental agreement is for that multifamily area. Uh, that area is about a $3 million construction project, so this is for the design of that. For any questions?
Council? Member Kersdatter.
Uh, we got so many different developments going on here. We just wanna try to keep them all straight. So this is the Ford Street project. That we just sold to the 3D printing people.
Yes, and so we haven't officially, of course, closed on those because, you know, we don't have a plat yet. And so September 6th is when we'll actually have the final plat. Uh, if, of course, it goes through the proper processes through the next, uh, planning zoning meeting and gets approval for the final plat. Then after the September 6th, uh, council meeting is then when we can actually physically sell that to those landowners. So we're trying to expedite, uh, the timeframe. And so this is, uh, gonna be special back to, uh, the sunflower, sorry, the 3D printing folks on Crane Development.
Okay, so this is, I guess I'm getting confused on this is supplemental?
Yes, to the original agreement.
Okay.
With SEH, and then so the original SEH agreement had the preliminary, the preliminary plating. Uh, and then that included just one large parcel of that 20 and a quarter acres.
Okay.
While going through that process at the beginning, if you recall in April, that's why it does say April 11th of this year. That's when we actually met with the 3D people for the first time on May 13th. And then, so this is a supplemental that I've kind of maybe pushed off from, um, from SEH since July 11th. Uh, that is then, uh, on, on the agenda this evening for the construction documents for all the roads, waters, who are all the, all the.
So, how much have we, what was the original agreement for? How much was that for?
Original agreement for 26, 150, that was for the prelim plat, final plat. And then 39,000 and something like that for the construction documents.
So under 100K?
Oh, yeah.
Um, so this would be 226,000 more on top of what we've already agreed, okay? And that's gonna be supplement or added into their.
Their specials.
Specials.
Yep, this portion will. Of course, the city will have some, uh, costs, of course, when it comes to the plating. Uh, since we are retaining, you know, over 80 acres of that entire area for the.
The retention pond, okay. Thank you.
So this portion strictly for, you know, the 3D, uh, housing folks and getting all the construction to that site.
I think the key word here is what you said was expedite. We're trying to.
Yes.
We, we, we technically would not be at this point, had we not been, if we followed the procedure at this point, we wouldn't be here right now.
We would be, uh, waiting until the final plat in September and this would come to you in October. Where we hope to have construction documents as far as a, a bidder, uh, selected in October.
Okay.
Council? Motion?
Motion to approve supplemental agreement with SEH for construction documents for Ford Street Development Public Improvement in the amount of $226,600 and authorize mayor to sign.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item B, Approval of Change Order Number One for Prairie Lakes Detention Basin.
Again, um, so this is, uh, for the Prairie Lakes Regional Detention Basin that includes grading, uh, for the Trails End Development, which is just off of Fifth Street in Seneca, as well as the Prairie Lakes, uh, area development. Um, so what this change order specifically addresses is the Prairie Lakes area. Um, there is an existing pond in the Prairie Lakes area and we were extending that pond to basically follow what was final platted and what was originally intended for Prairie Lakes. As you may know, this developer has kind of inherited Prairie Lakes from the previous developer and continuing to follow the final plat. Um, so as you do with a lot of, um, holes that you dig that are very deep, you find things that you probably weren't anticipating. Uh, so where we are grading and cutting for this pond, uh, there's a fair amount of unstable soils that are saturated and that's the, um, justification for the additional clay liner that you see there for 17,277. And then also addressed on this change order is the change in date of substantial completion. The contractor, uh, had originally intended to start in May and actually started, uh, early July. So we pushed back our deadline from October to December.
Questions from council? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the change order number one for Prairie Lakes Regional Detention Basin in amount of $17,277 and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item C, Approval of Cost Share Agreement with KDOT for the Seneca Street.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, here is the agreement that we've been waiting for, uh, from KDOT, uh, from the Spring Cost Share Award. And so this is what we were awarded, uh, this past spring and then KDOT, of course, takes some time to actually get the agreements, uh, down to the entities for the million dollars that we received for Seneca Street. Stand for any questions?
Questions from council? Councilmember Kersdatter.
I'd just like to see that we're getting help with some of these projects. And so, next question is to piggyback off of that is, um, where does this fall in the Ford Street and then the TIF district? As far as timeline, which, how is that all gonna pan out? Cause they're supposed to be working on Ford Street right now.
Yep, and so Ford Street will be done, button up, completed by Mayor June of, see, I'm gonna look at that, uh, Mayor June of 2023. Um, at that time is then hopefully is when we're started then construction on the Meridians, uh, the Meridian projects. And so all the construction crews and that stuff, as far as the road work and utilities should be gone from the extension or the realignment on the north side of Seneca. And everyone should be focused on, uh, on Meridian projects. And then once kind of Meridian's underway, uh, I believe that this one is scheduled for, uh, 2024. Somewhere around there, 2024 as far as getting actually bid out.
Okay.
And so we do have some time on this one. Uh, it's not gonna be just consecutively, you know, boom, 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 boom. Uh, you know, my goal, and if we even could push that back a little bit later, just to make sure that the TIF revenue coming in can, of course, you know, make Mr. Smith happy and, and pay for, uh, the portion of Seneca Street that needs to. Uh, it also will actually make it easier, uh, if all the construction crews, all that heavy equipment, if everything could just pound the snot out of Seneca Street now versus having a brand new road and driving all the excavators and all the equipment to do all this heavy dirt work on it. to do all this heavy dirt work on it after it's done. Nothing irritates me more than having a brand new road and having a piece of heavy equipment just drive down the middle of it. And so, you know, it'd be kind of nice to have this down the road, but we, of course, will work closely with K dot making sure that we meet all the time requirements to secure the million dollars.
Sounds good.
That's a new one. From you.
What's that? Waiting?
No, we just not out of.
It's true.
Well, I mean, I mean, people do that all the time.
The term was new for you. That's not one you've used in the past. That's, that's where I was going.
Sorry, is that Minnesota coming out?
No, I just haven't heard that one in a long time either. So, you know. Anyhow, counsel, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve agreement with K dot for the construction improvements on Seneca and authorize mayor or city administrators sign.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Item D, Meridian Railroad Options.
Buddy. Here to present the options and hopefully get a decision on direction of what we want to do here. This goes in line with the Meridians we're currently working on for design. This is obviously at the railroad crossing just north of the Ford intersection. We've been in discussions with B N S F as far as options go. And I guess I'll go through those here tonight. Number one is this is the, the layout for what was done with the quiet zone study last year, somewhere in that timeframe. What we're hoping to find out tonight is if the city wants to move forward with, with these improvements now in line with trying to get the quiet zone established in the future or if they want to hold off and it's all done at a later date. Questions you're going to ask me tonight are on cost, I'm sure. And the struggle with that is B N S F won't provide us costs until we have further discussions as far as what direction the city wants to take. So I'll present what I do have. The first option would be doing this full build out for the quiet zone piece, just that Meridian. What they have told us is that this would require a revised easement, which would be a minimum of five thousand dollars to revise with an additional twenty five hundred dollar administration fee. That, do you put that down? Sorry, I'm short. And then it would also require a new survey to be done within this, within the railroad's right of way. That would be at the city's expense, cost unknown, until they tell us what exactly is required. This process takes at least three months. In addition, when we get further into it, they may require relocating the arms, the active warning devices or updating them, depending on their condition or adding new ones at the, at the sidewalk crossings as well. Which the costs of that are unknown at this time, too. And this would take two to three months to determine those updates. We're thinking that's, that means in line with the revised easement processing, too. There would also be an additional pipeline permit for adding a pipe crawler, updating, I should say, the pipe crossing underneath the sidewalk. That is an additional eight hundred dollar fee. And there would also be a sidewalk easement or sidewalk permit, sorry, that would be required for an additional eight hundred dollars. So that, that piece would be required regardless because the sidewalk today, we have communication showing that the railroad approved it going in, but they have no record of an actual permit from the city for that sidewalk crossing. So they're requiring it now. Like I said, that's an additional eight hundred dollars. Ultimately, what we do know on this, this piece is if we go forward with this option, we have all these permit fees and easement fees. We don't know the cost for construction. We do know it would delay the process for plans going out in a few months, several months likely. That's option one. Option two would be to replace the pavement in place and not go through all the, I should, I should tell you too. Yes, that's what I was just going to say. This option here for going to the quiet zone piece would require adding a median down the middle, widening out the street a little bit. I don't know, probably four feet or so on each side. And the railroad would also require a concrete extension of their pad within the tracks. All that goes into that consideration. But number two would just be replacing the pavement in kind and, and not having to revise the easement, keeping it where it is. That one requires a general license permit. This is for the sidewalk again, for an eight hundred dollar permit fee. And then a resurfacing permit fee that's typically filed by the contractor, which that cost will be passed on to the city during bidding of an additional eight hundred dollar application fee. And that permit for construction will last a hundred eighty days. Any extension could be filed for an additional eight hundred dollars. That's option two. Option three would be do nothing, leave it alone as is, pull the construction limits back to the south. We would still have traffic control that would have to go across the tracks. For that, just the traffic control fee, that would be a minimum, third, one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. And again, in addition, you would still have the sidewalk permit required for eight hundred dollars. And that's basically all the information that we've been provided at this time. I wish I had more to share on the cost, but like I said, they won't, they won't provide us anything until we have a direction from counsel. Ramsey. Yeah, that's a good point. So with the full build out for the quiet zone, the median would be built as far north to cover the Ramsey Crossing. So there would be no left turn access off Ramsey to head south on Meridian. It'd be a right turn only off Ramsey to head north.
Which would also, also prevent southbound traffic from turning left onto Ramsey, the bypass crossing?
Yes, that's, that's correct. Yes.
So counsel, really what we're, we're looking at here is do we want to prep for future quiet zones, quiet zones? Or not? That's really what it boils down to. We, we've, some of us have been on here long enough to know that the railroads are overpriced and under responsive. Okay, we, we know that. They're, they're, they're probably the worst entity we've ever, in my time, have had to deal with. This isn't the first time I've dealt with them. And they're just absolutely terrible because they don't care and there's nothing we can do about it. So boy, would it be nice if the city was in that, it was flip top the other way around. But so really what we're looking for here is do we want to prep for the quiet zone or do we, do we even want to even mess with this and, and change our construction plans and not even go with up to the tracks at this point? So with that said, council member Kersdatter.
My first question wasn't part of this taken care of with the original Meridian project and the that we, that's pre Brent's time.
Construction limits coming up to this, is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, because like, to me, we don't really, I don't feel like we need to go that far south. But I also don't remember how far that south we went as far as this Meridian project that we did to re, to help with the drainage. You know what I mean?
You can kind of see it on that display.
Can you make it bigger, Barry?
It's a, it's, there's a fine line there just north of that red arm. You can see the difference in the pavement coloration.
Sort of.
Yeah, it's just kind of at the, this, there we go, right?
Yeah, I was gonna say right about where the railroad, the pedestrian gate was.
And that's roughly where that limit stopped. My understanding is to avoid some of this before the limits were taken there to avoid getting into railroad right away.
That's exactly the reason why it didn't go that far.
Then I would follow up. Next question is from that point to an equivalent point on the south side. Is that section of roadway? What's the estimated time on how long that section is going to last? As far as two years, five years, 10 years?
Well, it's, it's more than that, too, because it's the smoothness factor, right?
Okay, right.
That's another issue to be concerned with. The underlying pavement looks like it's concrete that they wedged asphalt up to the railroad tracks at one point in time. I don't know when that concrete was placed. I mean, your concrete pavement typically can last twenty five to however many years.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is I quiet zones seem to be a fairy tale right now. It'd be nice, I agree, but as well as the railroad works with us, I don't know if it's good idea to use our money right now to go after this.
And I, I should probably say to, to start looking into, you won't be required to actually go through the construction. But if you change your mind partway in between, that may add additional time to their new review for whatever option the city goes with.
And we're only talking about this to, so we can construct the Meridian to sixty ninth? Past the ninth, right? Okay. Yeah.
So I mean, another thing, you know, that council needs to consider as well. You know, are we going to leave just so you, you know, if we, we don't do anything, which is, you know, these are your options. But are we going to leave that section between a six million project and a nine million dollar project? Leave that gap across the train tracks. So I mean, that's something that you're going to have to consider in this as well, in my opinion, as well as the trail that's going to be coming up from the south to the north is going to be 10 foot wide on that west side of Meridian. And so then you're going to potentially ball neck it and irregardless, we're going to have to do a permit for that crossing for the pedestrian cross irregardless. So that eight hundred dollars, no matter what you do, is going to be there. And so just take those into consideration with, with kind of when you're driving in your mind here, envisioning how that looks. Now, I'm not saying I'm in favor of one way or the other because I take the left turn probably more than everyone in this community on Ramsey. I absolutely do that every single time. I don't even know if I go down too forward to take a left ever. I don't know if I ever have. So I understand that concern, but at least look at the, the concrete and the condition of the roadway for all the constituents that might be coming to you and saying, you left this little patch. So.
So my, my two cents, if I can finish is not, I don't like the idea of not being able to turn left on Ramsey. So I guess being the quiet zone for now. I know it's a, it all sounds good, but until, when the money starts being talked about, that's where it gets way too expensive. So that's my two cents.
Councilmember Anderson.
I'm going to piggyback a little bit on what Dale said. I, I don't think there's enough push in, in the community that we're going to see quiet zones any time in the near future, especially coupled with the, the most recent cost estimates that we were given. I just don't think that's, that's going to be feasible. I don't, I, I especially don't like the no left turn onto Ramsey that was thrown in there that I know the amount of traffic that uses that, especially when the trains are passing. There are people that are heading south out of town and go to seventy seventh. Also, and I think Matt commented about this at our last meeting, but the, the, the train traffic is supposedly being lessened through here. Is that correct with, with? Yeah, with whatever improvements they're doing in other places. I just don't see enough push in our community that that's going to be reasonable now. I don't want to leave this gap in between two major projects that we've done in the last 10 years. So I would like to see us address this and redo these so that they're not failing before these other two projects do. So I would like to kick out the first option with the quiet zone. Because if we end up doing the quiet zones, it's, you're going to redo it anyway. I don't like the geometry of the curbing in the middle for something that we're prepping that may never happen. You know, I'm worried about snow removal with the curbing down the middle like that. So you know, well, you got, if you got a curb that's going to approach both sides of the tracks that people can't get around, that was the whole point of that in option A. That's one of the things you don't think about till it snows here. So I, I don't want to not do anything to it, though, having this major investment in Meridian. So that's my two cents. And I think a lot of the people would probably feel that way.
I do want to add one thing to, for, for construction, if the selection is to do anything for construction across the tracks, just to make everybody aware, traffic control during construction, we're probably going to have to have a phase where it's shut down right there. Because the arms only cover half of the, so we can't shift them over to one side or the other. And because of the permit length, it makes sense to just make it as quick as possible, shut it down around the tracks.
And, and you know, and with the Ramsey access, that's, I don't think is that big of a deal. But yes, we, we've also seen how many times that they've shown up just to work on those their pads without telling us and they just shut the road down. So, council member Stan.
Just want to piggyback on what's been said. I don't like the median part. I think if we ever do get into a quiet zone, you can see that done a lot of intersections. This can cut businesses and turns off and that's going to not make people happy. And I built like six east left. We're going to do it all nice. Let's do it first time and get done.
Councilmember Kersdatter.
So it sounds like we're going to do B. What, and that regardless, we have an eight hundred dollar.
For the sidewalk. We'll also have, we'll have the storm sewer, the pipeline crossing with the sidewalk for drainage. And the other piece of that was, let's see if I can follow my notes.
And then our completion is a hundred and eighty days from the time of approval?
So it's a hundred and eighty days when the contractor submits for start. So they'll do that with construction.
Okay, so sounds good. All right, thank you.
And, and with the plans, we have the option to dictate when that takes place, too. We can say it's right at the beginning of the project and get it done. So.
If we had, when, when we do this section, can the trains go through while they're constructing?
That'll have to be coordinated when we do that.
I was hoping you'd say no.
Yeah, that would not happen. Come on.
True. If you ain't go stand out there in the middle of the tracks.
No, I'm good.
All right, counsel. So it is appears to me and just a majority of nods or yeses that we will go with option B, which would be just replacing the pavement, leaving the existing geometry.
Correct.
That seemed to be the correct assumption from everybody. Great. All right. That's your direction. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to item E. Approval of solicitation for water treatment plant R F P. Sorry. First big step, the next big step in this whole project. So.
Yeah, with that introduction, I almost don't need to say this, but the day has finally come. We're, we're bringing before you approval to solicit for proposals for a water treatment plant. All proposals should be submitted by noon on September sixteenth, twenty twenty two.
Councilmember Anderson.
I had a question about just the general, in general, I, it was, you called it a design buildup. Is that newer? And I, and I understood, I've read what it was. Is that something that has happened in the past for facilities like this? Or is this something that we are wanting to implement to help our staff?
So, so, well, yeah, yes, in essence, yes. So when we went to write this R F P, obviously we're threading in new territories here. And when we wrote this R F P, it was patterned after City of Wichita that they wrote for their plant. And this is a design build R F P, design build concept with a brief operations and maintenance and training. So basically they can't, they're not going to just build a water treatment plant and hand us the keys and say, good luck. We're going to make sure somebody knows what they're doing, is going to be able to come in here and operate this for a specified period of time, train our staff how to operate this and that help us conceptualize a operations and maintenance plan.
I don't, I don't know if that's common, but I liked that part of it. I don't, I don't know if that's common, but I like that part of it for our staff side.
And I I can't tell you whether it's common or not either.
The operate part.
Operations piece.
Yeah.
Is that pretty common? But obviously, we've never operated a plant before, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Kirstetter.
So I got a couple of questions. If it's in there, I apologize. The, does it dictate what type of plant we are we're looking for? Whether it's a water an RO system, or what's the other one called?
Well, I don't have the concept, there's a green sand filter.
Yeah.
And then there's a reverse osmosis.
Right.
And there was another in the conceptual design, and and Gage can help me with this if I get something wrong. There was one that was green sand filter with it with an RO reverse osmosis. That documentation is going to be provided with the RFP, with the conceptual design, and we're hoping whatever firm comes is going to help us
Okay.
make that final decision.
That's, that's what I wanted to hear.
Yes, sir.
So, okay, because can you go to page two of the RFP? On right above number three, it talks about hardness, alkalinity, iron, manganese. And then below last sentence, treatment for iron and manganese was also required. So you have that in there twice. Is there a reason? I know.
No.
No, okay. I, doesn't surprise me knowing some of our water around here, I just didn't.
We do have, in our three wells, there's a pretty high content of manganese.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm not surprised. Okay. That's actually all I had.
Okay. Anybody else?
I make a motion to authorize any staff to solicit water treatment plant design build RFP.
Second, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, item 12, consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, raise your hands. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to staff reports. Mr. Schreck.
Just one reminder that again, this Thursday, Main Street Valley Center will be hosting the farmer's market event downtown from four to eight. In looking at the forecast, looks like we're in for some cooler weather, thank goodness, this week. Thursday's high is only 89 degrees, and so take some. So enjoy the cooler weather and come visit our farmer's market on Thursday evening. Thank you. And we are getting some new vendors, yes. So again, this is an experiment midseason, you know, not something that a farmer's market would normally do. But again, we've been dealing with some very high temperatures lately, which I think has curbed people coming out to the event. But again, with the cooler temperatures, we're hopefully hopeful that we will have more foot traffic and and have more vendors. So again, this upcoming Thursday from four to 8:00 PM. Thank you.
Mr. Owens.
Good evening, Mayor, members, council. Just pleased to announce we have filled one of the two open positions in our department. So we're just one shy, and we're continuing to work on that position as well, conducting interviews this week still. So we had one gentleman start this week. His name is Elijah Snitzler, and he's going to be helping us out and has a park and public building maintenance technician. So pleased to have him aboard.
Great, thank you. Chief Newman. Mr. Agelson.
Few things. First off, I'd like to start off with brush piles back open for regular hours. That's good news. Water tires complete. We're filling it right now slowly. And then on Friday, we were in a meeting here and with Brent, and we got some calls with some concerns about water, started making some calls, public work started making rounds to try to find it. As it turns out, there was a well being drilled at Sunflower Gardens. That well hit an eight inch main. Luckily, pressure stayed up. Well, we got it isolated, got it shut down, as it were, that main. Our staff started working it, trying to dig it down. It got pretty deep, got pretty soft. Determination was made that wasn't very safe, so we called Donlinger in. But was it Wade about midnight? Wade and I finally went home. They got that buttoned up, we got partially filled. With a heavy heart, I have to say, the cause of this under fairly several different conditions. Public Works is going to have to take the hit on this. Not our fault. We did locates. We missed the mark on our locates. We approved that well, and we missed the fact that they were digging that well in an easement. But we have to take the hit on this, as Public Works. Got it all cleaned up, got it buttoned up now. We're going to go back, it's all cleaned up. We're going to go back and evaluate whether we need to seed or maybe put some sod back in, because it was pretty nice. Wanted to update you on that. But yes, the fact that we were on running on pumps and the booster station saved us. That booster station sensed that pressure, pumps kicked on, maintained pressure in the line for us while we could get that shutdown buttoned up. Questions?
Thank you, sir. This is a new one. Engineering updates, because there's two of you here.
Rodney hit on my first one. Tower is complete and being filled, so looks good. I'm sure you guys have noticed the change. Ford Street Water, they're getting close to having the water line installed. They have, as you probably noticed, shut down the street, so they've started some of the clearing and demo for the street work stuff. So we were out there today with Brent, and things are starting to get moving on that. Just a heads up of our progress meeting today with the contractor. They have the two week heads up on the first road closure, but they're planning to shut down mid-September, the west half. So we'll get signs and everything put up for that. So I think they said August 29th would be the two.
Councilmember Kirstetter.
Are you going to push some notifications on our app and all the other social media?
We do apologize for the for the first red closure. It kind of got thrown to us that we didn't need anything shut down for the water line. And then they got out there and cars were driving by and their flaggers, you know, it was a little bit of an unsafe situation. So they felt, City and we felt it was safest just to get it shut down with the little notice that we provided. That's all I had.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Arbuckle.
Oh, you forgot one.
Oh, geez. See, they threw, no, they threw me a fastball with this, breaking this up.
Just a few updates on the few projects we have here in town. Prairie Lakes Grading, they are still out there moving dirt as quickly as they can. We talked about the change order at Prairie Lakes Pond. So contractors pretty much on schedule is on what they can do. One interesting fact for this area that you might not know, it was this area did have oil wells back in the day. It's something that we identified early on in the projects, and we did find a bunch of them that were decommissioned, some of them not very properly decommissioned, but we did call the state. As you know, some of this area is being cut down a fair amount, some areas five to eight feet. So identifying those wells and then also lowering them in some cases, something that we have recently accomplished. So interesting for that area and something I think is good for those wells that weren't properly capped that they are now. And then also, we discussed the Ford Street Development, which is also now known as Sunflower Valley. So final plat, we'll come to planning and zoning next week, so we should be ready for that. And as Brent mentioned, we have expedited and kind of worked ahead on the improvements, construction documents. I'm really glad you approved that supplemental, because we worked ahead a little bit on that one, which is fine with me. So we are close to final plans on those improvement plans. So just a couple of weeks, I hope, and we can finalize those and get those out for permits. And we hope to have bids in October and rolling in November as quickly as possible on that one. And then final project we have going for you folks is our treatment plant study. And as I understand it, our final deliverable on that one is a technical memo. And Ruston is our project manager on that. He's been working with Rod and Wade, and I believe he should have that complete before the end of August. They had a progress meeting, I believe, last week potentially to discuss some options and potential cost estimates. So you should have that document in front of you for the end of the month.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry about, I missed you there, that's just. Mr. Arbuckle.
Mr. Smith.
Got a few items here. Good evening, Mayor, council. First, I want to start off as a reminder, our next meeting on September 6th is the most important meeting of the year. We will be having our road and neutral rate hearing, our budget hearing, and our adoption of our fiscal year 23 budget. It'll be a great time. Along with that, you may have seen in the mail, this was the first year for Sedge County to send out these new mailers to every property within the city limits. What these mailers explain is how your property taxes will change from last year to, or this year to our next year based upon our mill rate that we adopted, et cetera. So I just did a quick example here.
Yeah, me too.
Example. So this is just using a house appraised at $100,000. The assessed value, our citywide increase is 7.25%. They're now their currently assessed rate. And then down here, it shows what your property taxes were or will be if we did adopt the ready to neutral rate, what they will be with our proposed proposed budget and what that increase is. So just a quick explainer of what that notice was that sent out, that will be sent out every year from now moving forward. The state did allocate some money to pay for this for the first two years. But after the first two years, Sedge County will start billing every jurisdiction that is listed on that form to help pay for that. I know they did send these out of Iowa. They had to mail out whatever, 200,000 of them. Like, so where that is coming down the road there. On second note here, we did update the CIP plan. We will review that our next meeting. I'm going to present to the Planning and Zoning Board first this month. Once we get their approval, that is in conformity with our comprehensive plan. That will then come to you guys for adoption on September 6th. And then just here, speaking of the CIP, we've been updating our projects online. We did have to switch it into current and completed projects, because Brent likes to work. So there's a lot of stuff going on here. And just a few things to show, like the water tower, it is completed. But on here, it shows 85%. We're just waiting on those final billings to come through to finish out that project. And then like Ford Street here, as we get new concepts for each project come in, we've been adding those pictures on here. So it's kind of like a one stop shop if anyone has a question regarding any project that's going on currently. So it's concept designs, the funding, the budgets, where it's at in town, you know, everything there. So we will approve that CIP on September 6th as well. And then also, along with those, to Mr. Kirstetter's point. I know all the new developments are confusing, so we went ahead and made a Google Earth for all the residential developments happening in town. So you can fly on through here and fly through town and see where each of them are. As each development has more marketing material coming out, who to contact, whatever, that'll be updated in that top corner there. Fly through each one we've announced all the way up to the 3D printed housing district here. So if you ever check in, you update yourself on everything we got going on, it's all right there on the new residential page.
Cool.
That's on our website.
Yeah. Let's see, let's see where it's at just real quick. So under, you know, businesses and new residential developments, it's just one click and then you're there. And just click on the map down there. Take it straight there.
Very cool. Fantastic work.
We did get our content manager system up and running for Ncode that we approved a couple of meetings ago. That is proving to be very useful as we're scanning and everything and have everything pretty much a one stop shop. And then last but not least, I wanted to invite Matt up here to give you an update on our app download numbers. Very excited. We got 1,000 downloads. Once again, to increase our point, we will be sending out 1,000 push notifications whenever something does happen in town. As its numbers increase, more people will become notified. So that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dude, I don't even know if you can, you could, you can't follow that. There's nothing you could do to follow that. So, no, don't even think about it. It ain't happening. Nope, nope, it ain't happening. Mr. Clark. Perfect. All right, moving on to governing body reports. Though late, I did attend the Heartland Expressions ribbon cutting today. It'll be a nice, it's, their services will be very similar to what was there, plus a lot of other things. And it's always great to have, when we have a business that happens to go away, to have somebody come right up and take their spot. So it's very cool. I'm sure I'll be there, because I have already some ideas that I want to do, so. They do, yes, they also do printing. They they'll, printing services, so if you need to have something printed, you can bring it to them and pictures, yeah. So they will do all, they do all that too as well. Thank you. Councilmember Stan.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Evans.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Bass.
I wasn't able to attend that this morning due to work conflict, but I've used, used them probably several times in the last three months, and all their work is quality.
Councilmember Anderson.
Want to remind everyone of the Valley Center Community BBQ this Saturday, August 20th, at 6 o'clock at Lions Park. Tickets are available at Ann's Attic and Nick's Barbershop. You do not need to buy one ahead, you can buy a ticket at the gate, which will be on the west side near the shelter, usually where the entrance is. Those tickets are $15. Hope to see a lot of people there. We're cooking for about 700, so.
You're cooking for about 700.
Yeah. We haven't sold a lot of tickets, but that's, that's kind of par for the course. I don't sell a lot of tickets ahead of time. And all the fall activities, teams, teams and or activities are recognized that evening and introduced, band, football, volleyball, all of that. So it's a good evening if you haven't, and the weather looks like it's going to cooperate. It's going to be fairly cool, and there's plenty of shade on that side of the of the park that we use. So every year, those trees get a little taller. So hope to see everyone there.
Councilmember Gregory.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Kirstetter.
No, thank you.
Councilmember Wilson.
Good to know, sir.
Councilmember Colbert. Second. Huh? Wait. There's a motion in a second to adjourn. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?